May I commotion to move the minutes of the meeting of April 10th, 2024 as presented.
Second.
Okay, public comments, not on tonight's schedule yet.
Hello, we're busy. Susan Hock, 5047, Blood Road, Metamora, Michigan. Got CLO things on my list here. Article 1700 from the ordinances, wondering why the planning commission last month didn't feel that they could let Mr. Israel do his job. Because it says right here that he shall administer and enforce the ordinances. It doesn't say he may, doesn't say he can, doesn't say if the township board says, doesn't say if the quote powers that be says. It says provisions of this ordinance shall be administered and enforced by the township zoning administrator. Read through some of the information about the signs today. I saw a recommendation to remove the height limit possibly at A1 and 2. Wondered what problem you'd be solving by doing that. Talked to some of my neighbors this afternoon. They don't think we need signs above six feet tall on our rural and natural beauty roads. Sign language embedded in the agribusiness section does differ. It gives a maximum of eight feet. Agribusiness is only in A1 and A2. So it seems like that should be uniform, whether it's agribusiness or another sign in A1 and A2. The winery presentation, looking forward to seeing that. I don't know who's that is. I think that certainly could be something that might fit in there. Talked to some neighbors today. The questions that came up were, will the vineyards be sizable enough to produce an adequate supply of grapes to support production? Or will you be receiving delivery of grapes grown off site? Wondering about intended hours of operation, whether it'll be seasonal, year-round. Wondered about the production of the produce odors. Wondering how many employees, common customers, antiscipate, licensing for alcohol. Those are some of the things that came up. You've already recognized you need a variance for the gravel road. I don't know if you recognize that on January 8th, 2020, this planning commission did approve wineries as an agribusiness. So that's there. And then, I know it's a little early for the election to go, but William Hamilton and Ariane Salkin, the county commissioner, as he tried to keep the language for EMS off of the ballot. He initially voted for it when the majority of the public left. He brought a motion to the floor to get rid of the approval, open it back up for discussion, et cetera. Fortunately, we had some commissioners who had the guts to stand up and get over the table and say, no, we will not do this. So I appreciate that. But what I also really appreciate is that Greg Wise has put his name in running and will be running for that spot. That William Hamilton currently holds. And I know Greg Wise will pull very well in Metamora, but this district also covers Attica precinct too, Lapeer Township. So everybody needs to get out and work for Greg once this election starts so that we can get somebody in there who really will represent the people and hear about the needs of the people. Thank you.
Karen Bruschetto, still the village of Metamora. So I'm going to talk about something that did not go over well last time I brought it up, and that is our super fun site. But I got that there's kind of a family connection with some folks to that. And I brought it up in the context of that is why we need regulations, because something like that happened here. Some tens of thousands of barrels got down the road here and got put in there to poison wells. But I think we need to look at it going forward as well. Because I've talked in the village and I've asked them, what is the plan? Because we are right next to it and our municipal wells are right there. I mean, in terms of groundwater, that is no distance at all. And I know the EPA, if you watch, I think it was 2021, they had a big meeting on Zoom where they talked about expanding the wells. Expanding the wells isn't a good sign. They're monitoring wells, I mean. That means it's spreading, right? And we can only expect it to spread. And I think we all need to keep that in our minds here. Because, and groundwater is kind of like a mysterious thing. Not even groundwater, experts even can tell you everything about it. My sister's a geologist, I have a groundwater expert in my family. But it is something we all need to think about. So the village doesn't have any plan for us with our water, but we need to think about the whole township around too. And it surprised me, and I tried to look through all the minutes and find where that big subdivision with those very expensive houses off of Stock Road, how did that get built there? So close. I couldn't find exactly where that is in there, but made me think about not having that be there. Because those folks have condemned wells and they are trying to get hooked into our village water, which our village water could really end time. We just don't know when those barrel learns are busting open, right? And so I think that you as a planning commission need to keep that in mind as people are putting houses in here. Because in Ann Arbor, I was listening to the radio and there was experts were talking about the site in Ann Arbor, Gellman Biosciences contaminated a whole bunch of water there. So they have an area that is one mile by four miles that is contaminated and by law, no one can put wells in there. We could very easily end up in the same situation. And I think we should be planning ahead. You know, when I asked the village, hey, look into tapping into the Great Lakes water for it. That's who services a lot of the municipalities around here. They're not even looking into it. Just find out what it would take, how much it would cost, how long it would take. So anyway, I just think that's something we should all keep in mind, people who live here. Thank you.
Now, this next, I think we're going to look at this, the 448, Garden Road, the winery presentation. But now this is just something from the requirements tonight that they want to find out what you can do and feasibility. So who do you want to start first?
Applicating, sorry.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to have to do that. I'm going to make one note here as zoning administrator. There was no application submitted for review. This is just strictly discussion only. There's no denials, there's no approvals. This is the first time I'll be seeing the discussion, seeing whatever is presented also. Okay, after that, it's up to you guys. Introduce yourself. Do you podium there if you'd like?
So Kristoff Roy, that's my wife Lauren. We live in the Turo's Lane in Lake Orion. We recently moved to Michigan from Georgia, where we're stationed, most recently stationed. And the long short is, yeah, this is simply a feasibility, I guess a feasibility study for us. Whether or not we can convert existing property with a horse barn and an existing workshop, both 54 by 54 into a tasting room and, excuse me, into a winery and a tasting room respectively. On the same property, because it is zone A2, I guess it would immediately be feasible to put either a orchard or some grapes on it, at least according to the existing ordinances under articles 24, I think 14, under 14 and 3 agribusiness. My memory serves me incorrect. But yeah, again, what we're looking at doing, seeking variances in two cases, because it's not really a change to the existing property. It's really just a change to the use. I think that was the very intent of the ordinance. So the first variance that we saw, because it's on a dirt road, to again apply for that variance to see if it's even a feasibility. It's on Gardner Road. It's a pretty low, I want to say it's a pretty low speed limit for obvious reasons. It's a pretty tight road, it's a dirt road. So obviously, we don't want to cause a whole lot of traffic. We did come up with a mitigation plan though, however, that is a concern. And this is probably what we're going to do anyway, is ultimately we want to be by appointment only. The intent is really to make the wine and the tasting room is sort of a side note, but it's an important side note. We want to be able to have people there to taste the wine, but it's not something we want to do nine to five hours in the day of the week. That just doesn't make any sense. Moreover, I wouldn't want to be my own neighbor if that were the case. Not that wineries generally create a big ruckus as they don't. It's not typical bar crowd, I guess, now that they're watching sports and this earlier and other things that wouldn't be fun otherwise. But it would simply be as a tasting room to display the wine. And I know the question did come up, is five acres planted of grapes enough? That really depends on how we want to scale it and we have no intent to be a large-scale winery. Not to go too far down the rabbit hole, but we've got three kids, my youngest being seven months old. We've got more than enough on our hands to do, as I'm sure some of you guys or parents can appreciate it. So limiting what we do with respect to the growth and scope of the winery. I think five acres would do us just enough as an average. And I've been making wine for over 20 years, believe me. As an average, that's about, with the grape, with the grapevine fully grown in at three to five years, and that's producing a minimum prop, you're talking about minimum 1,600 cases of wine per year. So it a little shot 20,000 bottles of wine per year, which would make a small to medium-sized winery. We don't have any desire to go much, you know, much larger than that. Frankly, again, we've got the kids to watch out for. And frankly, in the meantime, I still got a full-time job. She's watching the kids full-time, but I will be retired in approximately five years, which is when the grapes would fully be grown in. But to answer the other question, could we bring in grapes from elsewhere? Absolutely. And actually, I've been scouting other places in Michigan and there are a lot of arrivals that have grown. We're trying to keep it Michigan-only, if that makes any sense. I actually work, I volunteer my time over at Young Bloods Winery in Red. And I've been watching how they grow their grapes. And they're doing great business doing Michigan estate grown grapes, meaning they grow their grapes on the site. They process them, they do the whole fermentation process there, they bottle them there, and they're doing fantastic business. I'd like to emulate that, but just on a smaller scale. Because I'm not sure if you guys have been out there. It's actually, it's pretty impressive if you haven't been out there. Again, regardless of how this goes, I highly recommend it. Not that I'm biased, but I really like the wine. It's really good. But they're growing both whites and whites. So maybe it's feasible to do both here if that is also a question. Any other option too? And again, I'm not sure if this is the right place for the discussion, but based on the contents and the variety of the soil, I know the same at home, but mineral content wise, that has an effect on the types of grapes that you can grow. So an alternate option too, if you want to vary it up and more than have to go down this path. I also make ciders. I've won both awards for ciders and wines. So it can be really cool to open a ciderade, but not, I'm not a sparring place, I think they do great business. But more of a traditionally European style ciderade, either a Basque or Norman cider, if you guys are familiar with that. And I know that I grow and take care of those trees and brooms, so that's not really much of an issue. And the output would actually be complement to the grapevines, if that's a question. Would it be seasonal was another question that was brought up. The grape growing and the grape processing activities would absolutely be seasonal. Would we keep the tasting room open? If possible, yes. But again, probably at a limited capacity, maybe a few days a week, three, maximum three, four days a week. I can't see much more than that. Because if you guys have heard of wine or even beer for that matter, it's very much a hard, we call it a hard open weight process. If anyone's done any time in the military, it's very much like the military in so much as it's hard open weight. It does remarkably attend to how that process works. So basically, you wait for the grapes to grow and you take care of them as best you can. I wouldn't be putting in sprinklers. Michigan has more than enough wine and water, rain and water to go around and grow wine grapes. Big picture, after the wine, after the wine's put in those tanks, it's really just literally monthly testing until bottling. Independent of where you're bottling, it could take years, sometimes two years. If you use a barrel for it, if you put the wine barrels or the cider barrels, that's add another year to the process. So again, this is a very long-term process. And I know the question was kind of dealt with again, but that question about licensing came up. You guys were really the, I would say the first of many hurdles. So if you're not familiar with governmental controlled alcohol, obviously you have local ordinances. You have sometimes county ordinances, and it's the best of mine all, we are now in Detroit County, which is fantastic, at least for a winemaker. But we also have the state alcohol board as well as the TTP, federal TTP, the Tax and Trade Bureau under the ATF. And they actually govern everything from top down, from what you can produce, when, to literally down to what bottles you can select and the type of labels that you create. And so much as the wording that you put on the labels, it is remarkably tightly controlled. So don't think that for whatever reason that we run one, because there are at least four different layers of government to whom we'd have to answer after something's, actually even before something's put in a bottle, literally just to get approval for a certain label to go on your wine bottle. It literally takes months worth of work in order to get that through the TTP. See also, you know, my perfect case in point is the guys in the quarter of Young Bloods. It literally took just a young blood and David Youngblood about three months to get a wine label approved by the TTP. And that's outside of the wine making process. So if it's a concern, yet there are absolutely multiple layers of supervision, control, and otherwise inspection. Not only that we got to reply to for licensure upon buying the property, converting, but also thereafter in control of what we actually produce in the long term. So if I answered that as articulately as human possible. As far as production was concerned, again, big picture, probably no more than 20,000 bottles a year. If it's wine or apple cider, it's again similar output, provided it's a good year. But don't quote me on that, because you have, in certain cases, you have windfall years. In certain cases, you have droughts and other problems that I don't see that happening in Michigan. It can affect the number of grapes that we produce. Minimum impact, to go a little further down that path. There's, we're looking at minimum impact on the property itself. We don't foresee at any point, you know, tearing down either of the buildings. In fact, we're trying to keep the aesthetic as close to what it is right now as possible. The lighting won't change. I think the signage under, under what is it, section 1524? Don't quote me on the number, I think it's section 1524, I cannot remember the subsection. But the long short of it is, maybe subsection 8? The long short of it is signage won't be big. We're not looking for big neon signs. In fact, it'll probably be off, well off the street if that becomes a concern. I'll try to keep it under eight feet. I know that's a, that was a concern as well. But again, it'll be by appointment only. We'll probably do the vast majority of our advertisement via text, word of mouth, and/or otherwise via social media. It's really what comes down to, if you're going to buy it. Customers, how many customers would be in there? That's actually limited by a couple statutes. There are only so many customers allowed in a tasting room by, not by federal, but by state statute. I can't remember what it is, to be totally honest with you off the top of my head. But we do look to limit that anyways to probably 30, maximum 40 customers at any given time, probably less. Just because that's, I mean, you're talking about roughly a 2,100 square foot space that we have. Of that, approximately 15 to 1,700 square feet of space in the tasting room for people. COVID aside, all those other restrictions aside, I just don't want a whole lot, I don't want big crowds on my property. I don't want big crowds in the neighborhood.
Hi, I'm Lauren. I think what we're really looking for tonight is, is this something that is feasible? Is this something that the city might enjoy in your neighborhoods? We have not put an offer in on this property yet, basically because we have three young kids that can't risk buying a property and then hearing a no, your dream will never happen at this location. This is a dedicated endeavor. Again, grapevines take three to five years just to mature. The wine then takes a couple of years to mature. So this isn't a business that we're looking to bring into the city as a fly-by-night. If that doesn't work in one year, you know, poof, we're gone or we're trying something different. This is something that's going to grow within the community as our family also grows there. So we're looking to really dive in as members of this community. It looks like this is something that you guys would want to do.
Well, it's time to turn it over to the planner or our zoning administrator, if you want to make your comment. I'm not going to take a lot of public comment, because this is just.
Discussion. So the property, you do not have an offer in that?
No, no.
So it's not contingent of, it's coming out of our township?
It's contingent of, you guys think this is something you want to do again. You guys come back saying this is something we would never want here.
In Oregon, it's.
It's not contractually contingent right now.
Not at this point.
Not at this point.
Well, how much is the home value?
Home's valued at 1.26 million.
And how much do you think it would take to put the winery in there?
Fortunately for us, not too much. We did a feasibility study on the financial side of the house and it is doable, provided we sell our own homes. So for obvious reasons, we don't want to buy it without the contingency that we can convert it at some point. But obviously, being that it's for sale, this could evaporate tomorrow, hence the feasibility study.
And if this was approved by the township, would we plant the grapes right away?
Pretty much, yeah. Like, no kidding, I have approximately 150. She doesn't like the idea, but I've got 150 wine grapes right now in boxes that are being planted from cuttings. I'm not sure if you guys have farmed it all, but they are from cuttings and they're starting to grow leaves. I've got about a year before I can, or a year before I have to put them in, but I could put them in tomorrow if I had to and then put them on stage.
We would love to start integrating those grapevines, because that's the very first step that we have to do without grapes. And then in the meantime, we could purchase, we could purchase grapes or the concentrated juice from vineyards around the country. Really, if we wanted to get our start with actually making the wine before our grapes are matured.
So about a million and a half dollars to drink wine, that's what we committed.
That's, it's remarkable, it's a remarkable endeavor. And people have told me, many a winemaker who's ever in this position, have told me, they would never do it if they had the choice to do it again. But apparently, I'm stubborn and I guess she is too. She's a loving driver. I guess that might be the understatement.
That's good enough. Do you have anything to offer?
Yeah, can you tell us a little bit about why you chose this parcel of land to the Metamora Township?
Sure, sure, absolutely right. So we've been looking around in a bunch of different places. Originally, we were going to do it in Lake Orion. We are on an agriculturally zoned property. But one thing I didn't know, and I pored over their ordinances for at least days on end. And they said, you cannot, and it was something I missed entirely, it was really strangely worded. You cannot, you cannot conduct a business that is controlled by the state, by the state or federal government in an area where you have residents. I had no idea it was buried a thousand pages into their ordinances somewhere. So literally, we run a 14-inch property and I'm tapping maple trees and I'm doing some other stuff. I've actually made some cider, made some meat out of maple syrup, if you guys ever want to try it. But yeah, the long story short is, yeah, we can't plant there, we can't put a tasting room in, we can't do anything. Even though it would technically be considered an agribusiness, because we're converting the grapes or the apples into an alcohol product and it's subsequently controlled by the state and federal government, it wouldn't let us do it. So we've already sort of gone down that path. Now, as far as the Metamora is concerned, that parcel of land very particularly, not to give you guys any ideas on investment, but it is south-facing, which is exactly what you need for a vineyard. South-facing on a slope, so you get great drainage. It's got sandy, loamy soil. It's perfect for growing, at least at the face value, it's perfect for growing grapes. That can change. The soil appears to be well drained. It's, it might actually have too many nutrients, which is why I say it's possibly an orchard, depending on what we have to do. But right now, it looks like it's got the perfect soil content, the right sun exposure. The house itself is really nice and obviously the house, the house itself we live in, we're not going to be in theater in it. We're actually going to be living there. It basically meets every need that we have, both as a family and as winemakers. And it's got more than enough room, which is fantastic as far as I'm concerned. I will shed a tear.
You mentioned the road. You thought it was 25 miles an hour, really all the road around me more is 55.
I didn't know that. I thought I saw a sign for 25 somewhere on that. Fair, okay.
You saw on the hill, you saw on the hill off of Ryan, I know this is slow down too, but it's a yellow sign.
Yeah, this might be in that PowerPoint that you shared with the commissioner, but can you talk a little bit about how the export of products from the site would look? Would it just be like you in your truck or would it be?
Yeah, we would be getting big deliveries from, and by no means would be either receiving or providing big deliveries man. Because of the wine making cycle and the fact that I'll probably only have approximately six 2,000-liter tanks, you're talking about a few hundred cases at a time, something I can move in a small trailer or like a van. I've got a truck right now, I can pull it in a small trailer or put it in a van. We plan on self-distributing further if we want to seek an outside distributor. Michigan actually has a federal alcohol laws. In order to distribute outside the state, you have to be, you have to go through an approved state distributor. So if that happens, we'd be driving it, I'd be driving those same line of bottles too, because at one location, they'd be distributing across the state or out of state. And so our receiving deliveries should be small. If I have to receive wine, it comes in, I'm not sure if you guys have ever seen, 270-gallon totes with approximately this big. You can literally put two of them in the back of the truck.
I would like to speak. I am a homeowner on that road two doors away from where you want to do this. You spray grapes, don't you?
It depends. It depends on which ones. We wouldn't be using a whole lot of spray.
You may be in the same well that I drilled into. I don't want you on my road. I don't want a business on a residential road. We made a lot of sacrifice for the acreage we have to move our family here to have country and enjoy it. I don't want your grape business on my road. I want it to stay country living.
Okay, I don't want a lot of public comment, because they're just trying to figure out if they want to be there or if they can. That's why I'm trying to get the planner to.
I represent three owners who said they, I have their permission.
That's the other thing they have to.
Do not have to put up with this.
Very many within 300 feet of that property can get a say-so on it. And that can be a big problem. So we're trying to give you the straight skinny begin right now.
I'm worried how you're going to get in and out of the driveway.
It's the worst driveway on the road.
Right next to my driveway, your driveway is like, you've not pulled out that driveway. They usually make it to now and now.
That's right.
And get 20 cars pull out.
That's in the summertime.
So our ordinance that we have has definitions of agricultural, it has definitions of agribusiness. It has zoning requirements for areas where you can and cannot do agribusiness. They are actually in a zone that does allow it. The only thing that they would have to get through with the planning commission, through a special land use. It's allowed through special land use, that's approved by the planning commission. The one thing I heard as zoning administrator for your community is it's not on a paved road. And so that's one thing that it says it's got to be on a paved road. And as far as the rest of it, you would have to put together your site plan by a professional engineer and they would have to show the parking requirements to meet the ordinance. It would have to show egress, egress. You'd have to have your business plan and you could then present it to the planning commission as a special land use. That's where we're at today.
Yeah, we understand.
We don't want to try to run you off, but we want to give you the real picture. Very well, if you buy, it still moves up. And we're going to be right up front.
Yeah. George, may I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. It's a natural beauty road.
And it's not.
No, it's not.
No, it's not?
No, it's not.
Oh, it is not.
Yeah, we like it to be, but it's not.
So that's one less thing. But I'm concerned about the traffic. That road is really narrow. Today I drove, today I drove on it today and I almost got hit twice. And I'm a very good driver. I mean, I've lived here 50 years, I know the bad roads. So that is a thing. You always have to, and you've got to take into consideration that a lot of the people that are in this surrounding area do not get the 300-feet description of what's going to take place. And also, you should have a traffic study. That would be mandatory, because that road is not suitable, because we turned down a party barn on another road similar to that. That was a natural beauty road.
Just out of curiosity, I don't remember reading about a natural beauty road. What does that constitute? Or constitutes the.
The authority on that, somebody else.
Would you like me to speak to it briefly? A natural beauty road is approved by the Lapeer County Road Commission. Gardner Road has applied for natural beauty. Gardner Road has applied for natural beauty road status with the Metamora Township Board's approval and it's still in the study process. So a natural beauty road has to meet certain criteria for vistas, for plants, for animals, things of that nature. Um, once a road achieves that status, then its, its maintenance and upkeep is a little more restrictive than a regular road. For example, they can only do one path of mowing instead of two paths of mowing, um, to try to preserve that habitat. That's the biggest difference. And it can't be paved, for example, you know, if, if it's not paved already. If it's already a paved road, it stays paved road, it's already gravelled, it basically preserves that habitat. And, and that is in a waiting process and hopefully it should soon be resolved.
And the other thing is, we already turned down another winery on a dirt road several years ago.
We don't want to spend our kids' money yet.
Well, we don't wanna spend our kids' money either. This is something that you guys don't want there.
Yeah.
That, that's why we are here.
Not really that, you have to present to us, you know, then we gotta consider a lot of different things. You gotta have public input. Maybe it doesn't fucking do good at this point, I don't know how the rest of the board might feel, but, you know, this is just a prime example. Just taking a quick look at it and it doesn't look too good to me.
May I ask you a couple of questions?
Go ahead.
This is a commercial affair. You're going to sell wine.
Correct.
So now we have a commercial operation on what possibly may be a natural beauty road. I live with just a few houses from these. They're nice folks. Nothing about that. But if you're okay with that, there's a shortage of hops in this country and in Michigan. And I'm thinking about raising hops and selling them. Cause I got a lot of useless land back in my house. And I can raise hops back there and have very little interference. And, uh, I'd just be a truckload every couple of weeks, maybe, if I'm lucky. And there are plenty of buyers for it. So I would like to start a commercial business myself. I could use the money. Taxes are high. Thank you.
So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I think your presentation was good. You are zoned agricultural, you could buy that and grow grapes.
I know.
Uh, then if you wanted to have a wine tasting or selling wine or, you know, commercial activity, then you need their permission.
Tasty, right.
And that's where we're at today.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
And the gravel roads getting muddy when it rains and, and icy and winter天气.
It's very dangerous.
But we turned, that's the reason we turned the one down, mainly is because of the dirt roads getting beat up and, and, uh, they're not in great shape in the spring and any.
The other one was not in the horse district.
But anyway, just move on. I don't wanna be here all night either. Uh, thank you for your presentation. We try to give it to you as straight as we can and you do what you need to do and want to do. And then we'll, we'll go from there. We're not gonna promise the land.
Fair.
Okay, let's move on to the, uh, side research. Going all week.
Yeah, great. So, uh, following up on our last meeting, um, we took a quick look at the sign section, our zoning ordinance last meeting, and talked about some, potential regulations that we might want to amend or look at a little bit further and, um, and my recommendation to you all to start this discussion was to allow me to kind of reorganize the chapter a little bit. Uh, because there were lots of random provisions in random places and it just didn't read too easily. Um, and like we talked about with some of the signs that, um, the streamers and the banners up and down twenty-four, we're confident that a handful, handful of those individuals, handful of those businesses would like to comply with their ordinance, but they might just not be too sure how to or how to interpret it. So we'd like to make this chapter a little bit more user friendly. Um, and once we get it to be a little bit more user friendly, it will be much easier for us all to look at it and propose some potential amendments to it. So where we stand right now, the two documents that you have in front of you, um, one that's got some highlights on the first page, and the other one that has a little sign table on it, what I'd like, these are all, this is the existing sign section, just reorganized. I haven't added anything to it, I haven't removed anything yet. Um, so now what I'd like to do is walk through these two documents tonight. I have some suggested edits that I'll discuss with you all. Um, and then next meeting, I will come back with these same two documents, but marked up with all the changes that we discussed tonight. And then I think in meeting three, we can try and hold a public hearing for a tax amendment. So I'd like to, um, thank everyone for coming tonight. However, this is not a public hearing. This is a workshop between planning consultant, zoning administrator and the planning commission. You will absolutely have a chance to speak to these amendments. Um, how state law requires the township to maneuver through tax amendments is that the planning commission must have a public hearing and then the planning commission makes a recommendation to either approve, or I should say recommend or not recommend a tax amendment to the township board. And then the township board must hold a public hearing as well. And then the final either approval or denial of the tax amendment will come from the township board. Planning commission just acts advisories with the township board in this instance.
And just real quick, I know Mr. Enry has gone out and visited a few of these offenders, uh, just real quick, getting out of the way. Okay, brief update on that. I've gotten a gunshot patterned and torn temporary sign removed. And then the offload, which was the former trailer sales, I got them to, uh, remove both of those patterned and torn ones. And I brought to their attention that we have a temporary sign ordinance and that, you know, you have to come to the clerk and get it and they're good for thirty days. So how do they comply? What do you tell them? They removed it. They're away. Yeah, yeah, they did though. Yeah, I come across them not having any, calm, mild, polite, loud banner and got done. Uh, so the dealership is getting approved because they were already approved two previous times through Gil, uh, Gillings? Was Gillings the original owner on that?
Oh, for unload, you mean, yes.
Yeah, we're on. Unloading, unloading. Are you talking about the that?
I'm talking about the car dealership.
Oh, so I didn't get to the car dealership yet. Uh, however, I did.
He's got that big truck and that's the sign.
I did go there and nobody was there on site because they removed all the cars, if everybody noticed, out of there. Those cars were in and they're in and out. I think they're, um. They take them out and they're other lot and we stole them. So I didn't get a chance to talk to the principals on that because they were there. Yeah, but you're still, you'll be there when you see a lot of cars going. Yeah, that's how I do it. So that way we, I have a real pleasant conversation.
They go back and forth to the auction too.
Sure. As long as they're making money. Okay, Ben?
Yeah, we'll try and move this one. Please cut me off at any point, uh, to suggest an update or ask a question.
You want to go already?
I'm just, I'll just try and work through, just go off every section here and then I'll very, I'll carefully highlight my suggested edits. So starting at the top of section fifteen twenty-two sign regulations, so this is the first, first major reorganization that I propose. And we're gonna split this section into some headings. That first heading will be general provisions that apply to all signs. I guess we already have that heading in here, but now it's a little bit clearer. So letter A, a building permit is required for the erection and construction of any sign. Absolute good provision to have, we should keep that, no edits. Uh, B, no signs except those established and maintained by the township, county, state or federal government shall be located in a public right-of-way. And any sign applicant must demonstrate, um, what that setback is, where the proposed location of that sign is. Uh, I have an edit here, we should add some language that says, all applications for sign approval will clearly illustrate the proposed sign location and setback distance from nearby property lines. That's already implied as we work through, you know, we've got setback requirements, but it would be nice to kind of clearly state that right there.
Can you add rain in there also with right-of-way, the R O W?
Absolutely.
Because I'm twenty-four, has some areas that are larger than other areas.
Right-of-way varies, yeah. Um, C, no signs shall project above twenty-five feet in height. Um, so we are not proposing any, I'm not proposing any changes to this height. Um, I think this height should stay the same. However, we'll get to specific heights in specific districts. This is more of an over arching blanket that says no sign in the township will project above twenty-five feet. But then when we get into the zoning districts a little bit later, we've got tighter regulations for agricultural and residential and all that kind of stuff. Um, this only, only thing that I'll change here in C is we should add caveat that says, um, oh, excuse me. I was gonna say something about billboard height, but I think billboard height will still be only a max of twenty-five feet.
Gotta have to look at that.
Yeah, okay. So we'll check on what we've got on here for billboards. Billboards might be the one exception to height. But other than that, there's no height exception. That twenty-five feet maximum for a whole sign, absolutely. Um, D here, no sign above a height of three feet shall be located within or projected to overhang. That letter D is just explaining kind of our current clearance regulation. Um, so no change there. E, except for permanent freestanding signs, all signs shall be displayed flat against the wall or building. That's a great provision to have, however, we should add to that. Um, signs may not be more than twelve inches thick measured from the wall. Most signs are three to five inches or so and then sometimes you've got some space behind them, um, for wiring if need be. But most, all the sign permits that I've reviewed, I'm constantly reviewing the sign permits in the city of Lapeer right now. They've got that same exact provision there that says you can't extend more than twelve inches thick. And it's mostly for wall signs to kind of regulate and make sure they don't project too far out. Um, excuse, one more thing I'd like to add here, like, since we're gonna do several meetings, I know we're being very thorough tonight. Please do not worry about cramming everything in tonight because we're gonna, we're gonna have a chance to, you know, I'll work on this again and then we'll send it to you before the next meeting. And then we'll go through it again and then we're gonna go through it again at the public hearing. So I know we're moving fast.
That's okay.
Um, letter F, all signs that are obsolete due to distant business closing or activity, um, finished shall be removed within thirty days. I'm still happy with that provision, but I can see a want, maybe by the planning commission to want to decrease that thirty days, maybe to make it to twenty-one days. Um, what do you all think about that?
Fine, I don't.
Thirty days is fine. I think that calendar, uh, rating is better, thirty days.
Yeah. Yeah.
Twelve, twelve times a year, so.
Okay, great. We'll keep that thirty days. Um, all signs shall be maintained in a condition similar to that which existed at the time of their erection. I think that's one that we should keep in mind because there's a good provision that we can use when signs don't look as they should. If they need a power washing or whatever, we can hit them with that, uh, permission. Maintenance of the property, uh, properties surrounding any signs shall be kept clean and free of weeds and rubbish. A lot of times with those monument signs, like the beautiful one we've got out here, there's some landscaping around it. So that's just a good one to keep the maintenance up with that landscaping because as we know, that really impacts how the sign looks. Okay, letter I, sign bonus for landscaping. Joe, have we ever utilized this provision that you can remember?
No.
No? I think we should remove this one altogether because this basically allows, you know, if you add a bunch more landscaping on your site, you can have a lot more sign created. And I don't see, I don't see the need for it at all. If somebody wants to have a larger sign, they can apply for their hands and we can review their base. Um, I think this is silly and I think about some ongoing sign cases that we've reviewed here in the township and I think that, um, that maybe could have helped out some applicants that I'm glad they didn't find that provision. Um, letter J, all signage must comply with clear corner vision. I just proposed to combine that, letter J, with letter D because now we repeat ourselves in this chapter. Um, so let's just keep clear vision in one provision and that'll be in letter D on that first page. Okay, moving to page two, prohibited signs. So here's our second section. Now I very clearly pulled out every provision that discusses, um, signs that are displayed out and not allowed in the township. And now we've got a clear list of what our prohibited signs are. So this would be a real good one that we can look at and try and police signs a little bit better in the township. So I propose no changes to those first four, A, B and C. A, B, C and D, I think those are strong. Um, and within letter B, you can see there, it says affordable sign. Affordable sign is a sign that's not permanently anchored or secured to either the building or the ground. So there we go, car dealership, who's got the sign on the side of the truck, that is not a permitted sign in Metamora Township, prohibited sign.
Right. Uh, I have a question of, about the prohibited signs.
Absolutely.
Um, would you include a logo in signing? How do you do, you know?
Yeah.
I was thinking.
Like a logo on a, on a vehicle or something?
What kind of?
No, a logo on, uh, a commercial building. Would that be considered a sign?
Depending on its size, it would depend on its size and how it's really written. If it's pretty small, it might fall under our letter C signs exempt from permit requirements, but it has to be pretty darn small.
Uh, I was thinking more or less of the Taco Bell. Cause it's three sided.
It's three, there's three wall signs up there, yeah. And they've got one that's just a logo, right? So that's certainly a little bit off to, um, interpretation. I personally consider a logo sign the same as any other sign.
Yeah.
I think it's the same.
So I'll bring to the TC's attention, the Marathon gas station has signage on their canopy. And it's just a logo, right? Maybe it says spells out Marathon. And they have also the same thing on their pole sign at the street. And they are just now spending about eighteen thousand dollars. We gave them a sign permit and they're changing the logo. Ever so lightly. I mean, if I didn't tell you they're changing the logo, nobody would even know. But that's what's going on now. So I looked at our sign ordinance on that and, you know, it's already there, so there's no way I can say no.
Yeah, that's a great point.
But they're changing the M. The M is what's changing. It's the M. And then they're gonna put Marathon up on the, on the canopy and change the M. So, you know, the Taco Bell one.
Be considered, yeah.
So this would clearly fall under the planning commission's approval when they bring their stuff to you for approval.
We didn't think about a logo being part of it. That's the thing.
You don't have a problem, you don't think. So let, let's talk that just a little bit louder right now. McDonald's has a big golden arch, right?
Yeah.
And so that golden arch is probably greater than a hundred square.
I bet it is, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And then it says McDonald's inside of it, it's probably smaller than the one hundred.
Right, because we were just considering what's on the building, not the accessory things that they put out.
So then, does the township want to entertain legal? When you get a major McDonald's or Metamora ice cream store that has a trademark logo, are we gonna be getting involved in litigation with trademark issues?
Uh, I don't know.
Yeah, if you just have the gold arch instead of a name or?
How about Nike? They got a little swoosh.
Oh, I doubt that Nike's gonna come far.
You never know.
Gerald, can I get just a quick clarification?
Unless they clear that with the.
Well, I just started bringing it up about the logo.
Chairman, can I get just a quick clarification? The signs that you're talking about, Joe, so they didn't get approval for those signs through the township?
They did at one time, that's why they're there.
But then they got bigger and they didn't come back? Is that what happened?
They're not getting bigger.
Okay.
I mean, they're all.
Well, you talked about big golden arches and.
Well, the big golden arches is McDonald's. I mean, that's kinda like.
I know, but did they, did they, did they ask for approval for that?
McDonald's?
Yeah.
That, McDonald's is not changing a sign.
No, but when it was put up.
Of course.
That's okay. So it met the requirements.
It's approved, it's there.
Okay, so it's not really an issue then? Is that correct?
Well, I guess the only issue would be if we're gonna limit the size of somebody's trademark.
It's a sign.
That's what the discussion is about.
That would get us into a lawsuit, probably.
It's a sign.
Pretty bad.
That costs us a lot of money.
But it's something to think about, or this is gonna take three times.
Yeah, right. Let's keep logos in mind. My recommendation to you all would be that we include logos. So like, we're working with Taco Bell right now on their sign permit. They wanna put up a full sign. On that full sign, the Taco Bell logo is there and that's all included in their sign area. It's not like we, you know, think about the McDonald's sign. It's not like we separate the language from the logo. It's all one sign. So, yeah. Keep that in mind.
We can say a logo is a sign.
Mm-hmm, right.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, logos included in the logo.
And that says logo on his hat.
The way they're doing it.
Yeah, do you separate the carhartt from the actual?
Oh, the language.
Well, yeah. But, yeah, I mean, yeah.
So I think, you know, something to think about, which one here?
Right, yeah, which one here?
Which one here do they want on it?
So, uh, one addition to this section prohibited signs is we should add a category that says unsafe signs. And basically unsafe signs as determined by the building official, and then we can list off maybe six or eight, um, ways that a sign can be unsafe. Safety concern, maintenance violation, um, not complying with corner clearance, um, doesn't have proper electrical or building permits. Doesn't meet code, uh, things like that, just a kind of a blanket provision that allows the building official to say, hey, that sign is not, or violation of traffic. Just a blanket provision that kind of allows, gives the township some ability to regulate a little bit further there. Okay, moving right along to letter C. These are signs that are exempt from permit requirements. That's currently how the language reads. I vote to just clarify that, and we should change the heading of this section to just call it signs not requiring permit. And it says following signs shall be exempt from permit requirements, so temporary window signs that are small and are only up for fourteen days. You cannot get a permit for those if they're up for fourteen, longer than fourteen days, you gotta get a permanent. One illuminated sign stating that, excuse me, one non-illuminated sign stating the name or, uh, profession, um, of a home occupation. Yes, that is allowed if that's a very small sign, six square feet. So I think that that's fine to keep, I think that one's fine to keep. Uh, I will propose some changes to our residential signs standards here in a little bit, but I think that's fine to keep. C, memorial signs or tablets, historical markers, so here we go, names of buildings, uh, dates of erection. Once again, those are some really small signs. If they were larger and they seem to be a wall sign in nature, we would absolutely force them to come and get a permit. Permanent bulletin boards not exceed sixteen square feet in the area for public or charitable, education or religious institutions. Those can be outside, however, they must not be within twenty feet of property lines. Have we seen many bulletin boards pop up or be more actively using? No, okay, I think that's fine to keep in that case. Page three, actually all of those, E through I, everything on this page I proposed to keep. So we've got temporary construction signs, um, gasoline price signs. I will propose that we're gonna, we should add, we don't have very clear provisions in here right now for gasoline signage. And we should, kinda like Joe said, Marathon's doing a lot of changes on their awning. So in the city of Opea and a lot of other communities, we've got some really clear provisions that say awning signs. And lots and lots of regulations that can go along with that. We currently do not have good stuff on that right now, I think it's a little unclear. I'd love to see the, uh, former sign applications that came through for some gas stations, and just kinda see how they were treated a little bit. Given that the language is kind of missing right now, I would say. So signs advertising land, that's all allowed without a permit, but you gotta take it down once the land has changed hands. Political signs, still, once again, allowed without a permit. Directional signs that are necessary for public safety, so I think about large parking lots. And little signs within the parking lot that kind of guide you to the entrance or the exit or things like that, you can, those are allowed without a permit. ATM signs, that's also, I checked a few other ordinances on that one, that's also something that is allowed kind of across the board is, if there's an ATM inside a structure, you're allowed to have a sign, that's, you can only have it without a permit. All directional signs, so any public use signs, directional signs, street signs, or parking lot directional signs, those are all allowed without a permit. One addition to the section that we talked about last time is we should add flags in here. And we can clearly see, so I was thinking at first, let's just add American flag. Well, then I read a few sign ordinances that said, you know, if we allow an American flag, I think we might, I think if we'd be better off by just saying flags. And then we can say, for example, patriotic flags, things of that nature. But we probably should put a limit on how many flags can be in one lot. So I saw three in some ordinances, I saw five, um, what's the intent of the commit? Or we don't have to have a limit, we don't, it's totally up to the commission. I would rather recommend three, but then I can see some instances where, you know, you have a large parcel, you could fit more than three, it wouldn't really bother anyone.
So let's talk then, flags, are we talking the American flag, limit three of them? Limit five of them?
We're fifty, probably can't limit that.
So, you know, pretty much in my belief in this America is the United States of America flag should be hands off. But any other flag we can regulate. I mean, other than the state administration flag, we probably shouldn't regulate that. But, you know, as far as like these temporary flags that we see. And that's not only Metamora, ever since, they're everywhere. I mean, that's like the new flag.
Is it your track?
So that's where we get tight, we get tight on the definition though there, and we say that a flag in this context cannot advertise a business. You know, something like that.
So that, that would be really high.
So would a flag that said barbecue ribs, is that advertising a business, or is it advertising?
Product, product business.
Business or product?
Or commercial gain, maybe it's another way, flag advertising commercial gain.
Yeah, I like. American flag is up for marketing.
Okay, right, so why have the provision strictly saying that American flags are an option?
So these temporary flags, you know, we, we need to have a little more thought on that. We got three meetings to do this, so everybody put their thinking cap on it, and as you're out and about, I mean, they're everywhere. Now, they're disposable, they're, they're by no means gonna last a long time at all. And so do we wanna, you know, handcuff all the businesses when they have an opportunity, when the sun shines? You know, make a buck to pay their taxes as a young people?
What is it, thirty day economic plan is thirty days?
We do have a thirty day temporary.
I mean, you're, you're not really. You're not a handcuff, you know, you can put it up for thirty days.
Right, so let's look at how long our thirty day is, can we do it every thirty days, or do we do it three times max, or do, you know? I mean, I'm just looking at the business people that are trying to get somebody to come in to buy their products. You know, otherwise, I mean, let's be honest and fair about it, if you drive down this road and they didn't have that flapping in there, you wouldn't even know that they're there or that. So we might wanna, you know, let's say a V or V one or V two use group.
There you go, yeah.
You know, for an old use group, you don't really need it, right?
Alright, so we'll put a pin in that, we'll come back to that next month, we'll definitely add a definition about the American flag, but then we'll revisit flags here, um, in the future here. Here we go, temporary signs, so here, this section, uh, discusses what temporary signs are allowed. This section, the provisions that are included here in letter D, temporary signs, get a little bit more district specific. And I, I, so one, one addition that I'd really like to add to this section is, right at the top, I'd like to say a temporary sign permit is only required when clearly stated in this section. Because these first three, A, B, and C that I pulled out of the existing ordinance, did not say anything clearly about acquiring a permit. But there on letter D and on letter E, it talks a little bit more clearly about a permit. So if we want, but, once again, this is kind of up to the desire of the commission. We could have a temporary sign application that is kind of completely separate from our sign permit application, and, um, you know, that's one thing that a handful of communities do. However, I think maybe as we go through this a little bit, you'll see that, I think it, I think it works well at how it is. So letter A there, window signs located inside of a building that are visible from the front lot line are permitted for fourteen days. That's it, if they're up longer than fourteen days, you gotta be permanent, just we've discussed earlier. Uh, letter B, temporary signs which advertise a new residential subdivision or similarly, similar permitted development. Are allowed only in A one, A two, in our higher intensity residential districts, uh, mobile home districts as well. And those shall not exceed fifty square feet, and they shall be removed immediately after the last available lot or parcel is sold. I think that's, first, I think that's fine. Letter C, temporary signs which advertise a new residential subdivision or similar, kinda same exact provision, but I guess it is also allowed in R one or two. And so we've got a lot of stuff as we keep going through here, a lot of provisions that are strictly applied to subdivisions. And I think that's interesting, um, and you'll see as we get to the second half of this discussion, we're gonna create a section that specifically discusses residential subdivision signs. Cause we've got so much language, uh, for that one use group. So letter B, a letter D, temporary signs which advertise a new business or sales or promotional events. Those are permitted in our business districts and industrial district, office district, but these, this one you have to get a permit for, for a temporary sign. Uh, and I think that's great, I think that should stay the same. Applicant will file with the township clerk, and they must, basically you have to do the same exact thing that you do for a sign permit right now. For a temporary sign permit, you do the same thing as you would for a sign permit, and that's what that letter I calls out, section. Fifteen twenty-two K is our required information for a sign permit section, so that's why our I says you have to do everything in that section. Once again, it states that those signs will only be displayed for thirty days, uh, and no business shall have the same message sign up. More than twice per one year.
Yeah, it says twice a year.
But once again, that is very specific to this.
American flag signs twice a year.
Does that infringe on, um, people in the military? You know, retired, or, what is it, that they can have roadside things they don't need a permit?
I'm unfamiliar with that.
That's something that we've discussed before.
Okay.
Check on it.
Yeah, for sure.
Let's go back to this expiration of the thirty days twice a year. Is that, is that twice a year for like a seasonal business that we have here? Is that June and August or?
Yeah, I don't know.
Should it be?
I, I, I'm just asking.
Well, that, even if it says, your business shall display the same temporary sign message more than twice per. So you can change the sign message, right? You know, something you buy yourself.
So you gotta have some kind of limit.
Yeah, that's same, same, that's a good, uh, good looking.
Yeah.
Good looking at it that way.
It's all about poking holes.
It's all interpretation, like you brought it for.
Right, it, it sure is, absolutely, it sure is. Okay, so we'll keep that one, I never podded that for a month here, and we'll come back to that there on the next one. So no temporary signs shall see thirty-two suite, thirty-two square feet in area, I like that, keep it small. Must be set back ten feet from all property lines, that's kind of a repetitive statement, but it's good to continue to repeat it, so people know very well. And temporary signs shall be removed immediately upon expiration of the thirty day permit, that's a good one that, uh, our friend Joe can point to here when he walks into those businesses. Letter E, one temporary message board sign shall be permitted for a special event of a church or a nonprofit charitable organization or community service organization. I like this provision because it's very use specific, so it's like you can't have, you know, if, if, if a business wanted to do a charitable, it, it wouldn't be the same as if a church had a yard sale, or if a church had an event. So I think that's all fine to keep there.
Okay, temporary message board sign, is that the guy standing out for food? Is that the one you see on a trailer? Is that the one you see on a poll post that they change the letters out? Do we have a definition of that somewhere?
That is a great question, I am not sure.
Is that one that's, you know, we used to at grocery stores, put them on wax paper, butcher paper, and sign paint or paint, is it a temporary message board?
Or you could date yourself.
I, I don't think it's the one where the guy will, will work for food, cause then another four years, the temporary message board sign should not be eliminated. So it's gonna eliminate his.
Right, it can't be eliminated. I would draw our attention back to prohibited sign section, where it says that every sign has to have a fixed foundation. So even if it's a temporary sign here in this category, it still has to comply with all of our regulations in the prohibited sign category. Portable or vehicle advertising sign, there you go.
But it's temporary, so I would have a foundation.
Yeah. It shouldn't.
I agree, it should, it should.
If it's temporary.
It should, well, maybe some temporary.
No, I never bring that up, cause I think we have one in this township on this road out here.
So we'll get, well, I'll propose a definition for temporary message board signs at the next meeting, and we'll take a look at poking holes in that. It does say here that temporary message board signs cannot be eliminated. However, it does say a less electrical service and connection has been inspected and approved by the township electrical inspector. Maybe I'd propose to remove that, because why should it, if it's only gonna be up for fourteen days, it's really.
Yeah, cause always got the arrow lights and blinky lights.
Right, and maybe those temporary signs are more prone to be a little bit too flashy. So I don't see the need for that. I mean, if they wanna have a flashing sign, they can apply for a sign.
Yeah, just delete it.
Yeah, okay.
I like it, we're getting rid of something.
Can you take this from five pages down to one page?
Okay, easy page there, page five, um, sign permit application requirements. I kind of looked around at how we've done sign permits in the last year, and I just wanted to make sure that this, what the language here was kind of all encompassing. What, you know, what, what we wanna accomplish with this section here is we want somebody to be able to apply for a sign permit. And comply with everything that we ask them to by giving us the required information here on this page. So I believe that, yes, the answer to that is yes, this information that's written here on this page, if somebody doesn't write and reads this, it gives us everything we need to be able to evaluate every single box. One thing that we really need to discuss, and here's the, uh, spot where we discuss it, is who reviews sign permits? So we had a discussion about this at a previous meeting, there's not really clear language here, it says that the township clerk will provide applications. It does not clearly say who will review those applications. So my recommendation is that they're reviewed by the township planning consultant or zoning administrator, we can just add a line in there. If there's another staff member though at the township that you all would think should. That's happy to, this is kind of a self fulfilling prophecy, I'm trying to do myself more work, but, um, I, yeah, we're happy to interview sign permits.
Okay, I like that, either zoning administrator or consultant, but these permanent signs really should be part of the planning commission's approval of whatever site development they're doing. Because as you notice, a lot of them. Right, and a lot of them, they'll say sign permit at future date. Well, then it takes you guys right out of it. And then it leaves somebody like me or Ben.
To pick up the pieces.
To fight the battle.
To fight the battle, because, you know, that's where the battle would be. You know, if I was developing, I would, you know, do that later date and then come in and Google something. You know?
You remember the guys that dance up and down up there?
Yeah, or even that, how about the guy that's dancing up and down, that's a temporary sign, right? That's plugged in, cause it's a blow up.
It's an air sign.
So we have an air sign in here?
Um, it's not clearly stated, I was gonna think about asking the commission, I was thinking about asking you all if you wanted to remove it, but then I thought I've seen quite a few of them here. And maybe we don't want to have that be a part of the design, but what do you all, what's the desire of the commission on those signs?
I'd say very temporary.
Okay.
And reason being, if it's jumping up and down, where's your eyes going?
Right to the.
That's why they're trying to get your distraction, get your attention.
I understand it.
It's working.
So there is, there's something we're gonna have a problem with too, is these food trucks.
Good point.
Those are, that's just.
If they're gonna be there one week, more than a week, we should make them, uh, have a sign.
Get a perm, get a permit, absolutely we should, absolutely we should. So maybe, maybe what would be best, cause food trucks are pretty unique, and I can see food trucks not complying with like most of this ordinance. We should have a separate section.
Yeah, because they move around.
They move around, right, and that's a lot of sign area, that's much larger than a hundred square feet if you combine all the signs. So I'll add a section in here specifically for food trucks, and what I'll also do is blow up signs are allowed only as temporary signs.
Does a food truck, would that, that would fall under temporary signs?
Could, or could, it, I'll, it could go under temporary signs, cause when you've ever seen a permanent food truck.
They're only there for a week.
A week and a half or four.
Right, even shorter than that, yeah, okay, right, so that'll go for temporary.
That's who places the.
You know, that's what, that's what I think are great companies, you know?
It's getting, it's getting out there a little bit.
When I worked at the city of Birmingham, they had full-time people.
Code enforcers.
Code enforcement officers, they were former police officers that drove around and they did what they did. As your zoning administrator, enforcing all your signs and that, I mean, uh, I, I don't have a problem doing it. And as Sue pointed out, that's what I'm supposed to do, but I'm attracted by, you know, somebody, I just don't.
You got a food truck that's similar.
We can get you a police car.
Right. Yeah.
You got, you got those golden signs now that, you know, canvases, they're driving up the road, it's a little, who's gonna police that? They pull into the Shell gas station, what, you're supposed to run up there and say you can't sign there?
So, I mean. Joe's on a stick while they're waiting for.
Right. I mean, is a four-way stop sign, is that mandatory or optional?
I mean, it's all interpretation.
So it's definitely mandatory if you're sitting there policing it.
Yes. So yeah, as far as the food truck thing, I mean.
Roll and stop.
Do we even dive into the food trucks?
I think that's getting a little out there, that's my personal opinion, just.
The only food truck I know is the one that's part of, of the dog thing over in Oxford.
Yeah.
On Den, by Denlight. By the doggy place.
And there's one over here that lets us met more scare.
But they're not there, they're not selling anything, anything.
So that would be a planning commission item.
If that's his truck, he's allowing parking.
If that was his, right?
And food trucks are maybe a little bit bigger than just the sign chapter, so if somebody wanted to comment situated food truck here in Metmore Township, we probably don't have good language in the zoning ordinance.
We have not.
We have not.
Well, I mean. You're not gonna regulate the signage on a food truck, for one thing.
No.
But there could be some kind of, if the.
If I wanted to rent the parking lot for the weekend.
Right.
You know, or more, more than, more than, park in the same place for more than seven days.
Yeah, that's, I mean, if they're staying for, you know, two, three weeks at a time, that's a whole different deal.
Insurance. Okay, good discussion, yeah, we'll do, we'll do, we'll look at a food truck standard elsewhere in the ordinance, not as. Yeah.
Simplify.
Yes.
We don't need all pages.
Out of one page, that.
I don't know, that doesn't give much leverage to naff these guys. Okay, we would, this is gonna go a lot quicker than that first time, we're gonna go to the chapter, we're gonna go to the table here. So this is what, my, this table needs to be beefed up a little bit, this table was made by your former planner Doug Pickett and this was allowing us to review sign permits a lot quicker in row, but as I learned about six months ago with Joe, Joe had never seen this table before. So that's a problem, this needs to go into the ordinance.
Yeah, because this is the first time I've seen.
Right, exactly, right, that's because it was kind of like row internal information before this and that's just not, that's silly. I kind of think maybe a former, I kind of think maybe Doug Pickett set me up for success here by creating this because I didn't have to, you know, I just copy and paste this thing here. So we're gonna, we're gonna, but this, the thing about this table is that it is not all encompassing of all the information that we have in this chapter. As you can see on page three through six, we've got lots of other information, a lot of the information on pages three through six, I'm gonna propose to move into this table. We're gonna redo this table a little bit, on the top of the table, I'd like to have zoning districts. So zoning, moving left to right, we'll have commercial and residential zoning districts and then as we go down the left side of the page, we'll have sign type. Wall signs and awning signs and freestanding and pole and monument signs. And then, so you have the sign type on the left and then as you go across the zoning district, you can say, okay, in C or in B one, we can have a wall sign that's this size, maybe in M one, you can have a slightly taller sign, things like that. And that is, I would say, best practice and kind of generally, that's when you get, I know we talked about the sign table and how you all have seen the sign table in other communities, that's best practice for building a sign table is zoning districts across the top, signs on the left and then within each of the boxes, you've got all the information, so a clear bold sign, clear bolded point will say sign size. And then another clear bolded point will say sign type and another clear bolded point will say, you know, further provisions. So just to give you a little bit of taste of what I propose to kind of change up on this table. And, right, absolutely, we'll have one in there for temporary signs and that can, right, have lots of information there, just very user friendly. The only edit that I'll show you guys here on this table, other than kind of adding more information to it, is page two, we've got corner buildings and other buildings with multiple street or exposure crumage. Then, under other, we've got that middle provision that says the bonus sign area shall be used for additional identification on the side street, not to enlarge the freestanding sign or primary wall area. I don't see a need for that.
We took the bonus.
We're taking the bonus, that's why I proposed to remove it, you're exactly right, yeah, the bonus, so there is no bonus sign area. We've got provisions that you comply with, if you don't want to comply, you can get a, you can get a variant, you can apply for variants if you want. And then the other thing, the bottom thing, the temporary message board sign, that does not need to be in this table, it will be in the temporary sign section. Yeah. Okay, so now we're on to page three, this is really strange and talk about a self fulfilling prophecy. Top of page three, this sign, the existing sign section is littered with statements that basically say that public buildings are like exempt from all of the sign requirements. That's, that is not something that I would recommend having in New York, but there's no reason why governmental buildings should not have to comply with the same provisions that we've got for everybody else. Same kind of thing, if a government building comes in and they want a larger sign, apply for variants. Like this should, there shouldn't be no, all this determined by the planning commission, no, we've got a sign ordinance that has regulations, there's no need to be able to allow you all to sway from that, you know. I vote to just delete this public buildings, this all mention of that public buildings get special treatment, we're just gonna delete, delete that stuff. And then the other, what I'm gonna add to this table is I'm gonna add a gas station category here where we can talk very specifically about what we love at gas stations. Under illuminated signs there, midway down page three, I'm just gonna add a note that says all illuminated signs must apply for and receive electrical permits, that is kind of clear for message board signs, it's not necessarily clear for just illuminated signs. Any electrical service, I mean, I think that might be, they've, they're probably caught up elsewhere, I think any electrical service that's offered, you have to get a permit for, but we should clearly state it here. Okay, page four, the top of page four, we have some language about signs in A one and A two. That first provision says one accessory sign may be permitted for a principal use or approved special land use in A one or A two. Accessory sign is not a good word to have, we should get specific about what kind of sign are we allowing? Are we allowing a wall sign, are we allowing a pole sign, are we allowing, what are we allowing here? My recommendation would be that we say wall or freestanding not to exceed ten feet in height. So friendly reminder, freestanding means pole or monument sign. So at first I thought, well, let's do wall or monument sign. Monument signs are pretty darn expensive, while a pole sign that's only ten feet tall with an image on it would be a lot cheaper and would allow agro business to have a small sign without really breaking the bank. And that's not too much of a change from what we currently have, it's kind of just clarifying.
Well, we have six feet, now you wanna raise it four feet.
That's a big difference.
Yeah, and are you want A two six feet max?
Say six, yeah, right there, all signs reference will use, right, yeah.
So let's just talk about what happened here tonight, you know, if them people wanna spend two million dollars growing grapes and selling a couple glasses of wine, you know, what kind of sign are they gonna put up? Do you want a pole or monument out there on the road?
No.
If you heard the residents, you know, speak out about a commercial business in a residential ag setting. So, you know, my belief on that and by any commission, you don't have to think about this. Right now we have just a small shingle hanging in your shingle out there. But that's something we gotta think about.
So, right, I see, I see two, two main options, one option would be to really, have a really, really small requirement and one option could just say no signs, no signs in A one or A two.
And I think on our home occupations, we're limited to six square feet.
Six square feet, yeah, right.
Which, you know, six square feet is still rather large, two foot by three foot, right? Max, but, you know, it's gotta go with the flavor of the residents.
Right.
So I don't think we, if we give a special land use or a home occupation, you know, I don't think we should get into big, big, it's really more word of mouth.
The virtual was, our planner was new more than twenty, two by two or something like.
Really, yeah, okay.
George, may I, real quick?
Yeah.
Agro business is just that, it is a business, I understand they might need more than two by two, but if you drive through the areas that have, well, first of all, those are paved road ones, but when you get into A one and A two, if you want to limit people to two by two signs, what are you gonna do about all the horse farm signs that are out there?
I know, I was.
They're beautiful, you know, they're beautiful signs and they're not on pole and they're not a monument, but somehow you need to find a way to work that in, because like Joe said, yeah, they're not gonna want to see pole signs and monument signs on a rural.
And a lot of those horse farm signs, I mean, they didn't come to planning commission. They just have a lot of money and they like their horses a lot.
I wouldn't even think, yeah.
I, I leave that alone.
Do you think that for Joe's horse farm, would you even think about it in your head to go get a permit to go put a license as Joe's horse farm does?
What if we had a code enforcer? But since we don't, I would say no.
If one, I would beg for forgiveness later.
I wish you were here that much longer.
Right, that's why I was saying, I don't know if I said it, I meant to, when I was working for the city of Birmingham, oh, I did say that. They just had people that that's all they did.
I know, Rochester too.
Oxford.
Rochester.
You mentioned that, that's not gonna.
No, no, you know, the guy that's sketching the signs for, for a weekend thing.
Well, it becomes a money revenue for the city and then the city has to police it, no different than we do. We, we need to tighten the sign ordinance up a little bit, clear or simpler, get rid of things like we did, maybe some more, look into it and make it real easy, user friendly.
Yeah, that A one, A two, I would just take out the word accessory, one, one sign may be permitted.
But then again, I still think we gotta get it, it should either say wall or freestanding, so these, these horse signs that I'm hearing about, those are technically pole signs, I bet they're on two wooden posts and then, so that's why I went to the show not to exceed ten feet in height. We could also lower that, we could say eight feet or six feet, but I think, I think that we should probably, it's just best to put a true term on it rather than just saying sign, would be my recommendation.
So, you know, the key language in that, you know, we gotta digest this, approved special land use. So who approves that special land use?
This boy.
And so this boy would be the one that's saying, hey, your sign, everything's good but your sign. But then you have, you can't be arbitrary or capricious, you're gonna have to have some standard that you check off like Ben, Donkey, Ben, that checklist, and it needs to be in our checklist, make it simple.
So we'll definitely remove, in there on that second bullet point under A two, it talks about illuminated signs. Absolutely not, no illuminated signs in our A two, these horse signs are just fine, they should not be put up.
Now, let me ask you that though.
Yeah.
Could people have solar lights on them?
I would say no, personally, but.
We can do, go out and remove them as they do.
Eliminate it so.
It's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, we're not.
We're, we're not, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna turn.
Man, you're getting busy, Joe.
Yeah, at my house I have a school building, I put one light bulb, I put a fifteen watt light bulb on it because I don't want to pay the electric bill, but it looks nice.
Right.
So you just, you just leave the illumination.
We can leave it, we can leave, but then we've also, okay, well, on that same note, this, that second bullet point says that they can't be illuminated after ten PM and before seven AM. So if we're going on this vein of not wanting more regulation to police, we should probably remove that.
Yeah, I like that because otherwise that'd be working twenty-four hours.
This is like job security for you.
You better hit go.
No, I just took that out. I took that out.
Okay, there we go, point three talks about subdivisions, like I said, we're gonna pull that out and we're gonna have one section that says signage for subdivisions and then it has all this language in here. And basically what we've got right now just allows for a subdivision to have a sign that is kind of like on a corner saying what the subdivision is and it's a separate sign specifically for that one use. Whereas, you know, like, and so it could be a little bit larger too, well, we can talk about if it should be a little bit larger. Right now it says that will not exceed thirty-two square feet, I think, thinking about some subdivision signs that I've seen, I think that that is small.
That's a four by eight sheet plywood.
Yeah.
It's not that small.
No?
You don't need anything bigger than that.
It's about right.
Sounds great.
Not to exceed.
Sounds great, not to exceed thirty-two square feet and six feet. Six feet.
Car wash just had two, two four by eight sheets for sale, the car wash right next to you.
Okay, going down to approved in R one and R two, approved special land use may have a single non-illuminated sign that does not exceed sixteen square feet nor six feet in height. What do we, what do we think about that, just only special land uses, only special land uses? Which there's not many in our.
I think get rid of that because that's gonna also be in subdivisions, we can put a subdivision signage, right?
Yeah, and that's our only provision that allows any signage in R one and R two, aside from if you run a business out of your home, you can have a small, very small sign. So if we remove that, there's kind of like a blanket, there's no signs allowed in R one and R two, and I think that's probably the way to go.
Or if we get to your next one, where one permanent sign may be placed at natural.
Subdivision, right, yeah, but only for subdivisions.
Right.
Yeah.
Not illuminated.
And, right, and not illuminated, yeah. All right, boom, right along, hold on a second. Page five, page five, signs permitted in RC, RM and MH districts, kind of the same thing as subdivision there, one accessory sign not to exceed thirty-two square feet height, six, excuse me, thirty-two square feet area or six feet height, may be permitted for each multifamily project, mobile home or approved special land use, maybe we kill approved special land use and just keep it to.
Yeah, get rid of approved special land use.
Yeah, because we wanna allow signs, but for subdivisions, we don't really need signs for these other, sometimes multiple family districts are, you know, multiple families are higher intensity residential, sometimes you've got some weird special land uses that can sneak through there. So, yeah, let's, let's remove that language that says or approved special land use there.
If you wanna put a light on it, you come to you folks.
And, right.
Or you can go, you can drive around and turn on a light bulb.
I'm thinking about a gas or are you gonna have to get?
If you drive a Prius? You're gonna need one.
Yeah.
What about a motorcycle?
Electric vehicle.
I was thinking of electric.
We need some drivers here.
A motorcycle, what about a bicycle?
I don't know, workout section.
That second provision there is just another standard for subdivision signs that will live on its own. So it's the same exact standard they repeated for three different zoning districts in our ordinance right now. So we'll just say these subdivision signs are permitted in any district where subdivision is permitted and leave it at that, we've got three things saying the same thing, we'll kill that. Okay, sign permitted in local office, business and manufacturing districts. The one freestanding sign that each business is allowed must be in uniformity with the design and display of the business itself, so the facade of the business and of the name of each town, basically saying you can't have a business with a different sign. Kind of a silly thing, but I guess that's a good, good thing to police there. That second bullet point, planned developments of more than two offices, two business or industrial tenants may have a single freestanding sign. This is great language to have, you know, this will allow us to have pole signs with basically a name of the, name of the plaza and then little signs for each business in there. However, one thing that we need to add here is we need to add a statement that indicates that this is all that is allowed for those shared tenant spaces. It's not like you can have a big old sign that advertises the entire space and then every business can have a monument sign too, that's not how this works. It's kind of how it reads right now though. So we're just gonna add a statement that says that this is, this is what's allowed for a shared space, a shared office park or a shared strip mall plaza, something like that.
George, I'm sorry, may I ask a question?
Okay.
Ben, Joe, Joe expressed a concern a little while ago that if you don't allow the pennant flags, quote, nobody will know the business is there. If this language doesn't allow business owners to have signs that are adequate for shoppers to know the business is there without a secondary pennant flag stuck in the ground out near the road, does it need to be changed? Should a business owner need to put temporary flag? Should a business owner need to put temporary flags out so that someone knows their business is there?
It's a, that's a good point, however, I would say in language of this section, it does allow every business to have a wall sign.
Correct.
So every business can have a wall sign, and then every business can have a sign within that larger shared sign.
I think you know where I'm going with this, Ben, that if this is adequate, then. Consider carefully whether or not you need to add the allowance of multiple pennant flags on the side of the road for the shoppers to know where the businesses are.
I think Sue brings up a good point on that, so as all of us that are responsible for the administration enforcement on this. We need to really take another day, couple hours, drive around the township, take a visual inventory of what you're seeing out there.
So your point is if you have six businesses in a plaza. You shouldn't have, shouldn't be able to put out six banner flags or whatever advertise in each individual business. But in doing so, it's selective enforcement where you can do it, but you can't do it.
Right, unless they have a temporary sign permit.
So if all six businesses come and get a.
Temporary sign.
It should be able to.
You should know that one for each one, but that, that's why I suggest that the planning commission drive around visually, see what we have, so. Next time you see a flapping one that says, I think there's one out there that says barbecue ribs. Is there a sign, pole sign or monument?
The only reason I say this, these flat, I don't know if you've noticed all the plazas around here, multiple businesses.
Yeah.
There, 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 businesses are coming and going.
Yeah.
So they're trying to, they're trying to survive.
I was gonna, so then you bring up the fact, so you, the, the, the sign that has been, um, not more square, the grand pause or whatever, has been there for a long. So we all know that it's got the same, you know, header up top, and then there's five or six spots or whatever.
Nobody even looks at.
That's what I was gonna say.
That's what I'm giving you.
So you can't, you still know there's the five spots.
See what our monument says, and see if that's adequate for that business that's there, maybe that's why they're all putting out temporary flag signs.
Like Farm, Farm girl's about to open.
Yep, yep.
And she's gonna have one on.
And she's gonna have probably more than one.
Yep, so then like you.
You can't care, care for it.
No, you can't.
But that is probably why Marathon is updating their signs, you got to refresh things from time to time to catch people's attention. And as, I don't remember if it was Lance or if it was Nick said, that sign in front of Cracker Barrel's been there for a thousand years, um, without being updated or improved. Right, and so, you know, that's something that they could consider, obviously, as business owners, is updating and improving it within the regulations.
I think as far as updating, I think, I mean, we all just become numb to it though, right?
Right.
I mean, you, you see a speed limit sign every single day, but you just drive the speed limit.
Well, here's something, why you bring that up. You know, you don't have to pay attention to that speed limit sign until you have the flashing one that says too fast.
Yeah.
So that's another way signs have changed, and how we've changed. Okay, so if we didn't see that flashing one saying you're too fast, we're, we're just driving. It has probably no different than anybody that has a business with the big sign out there. Unless they have the flashing, we're just driving, and in another community in Almont where I'm at, uh, we have intermittent message boards now that. Put out there, and so some of them have, you know, star-spangled banners and fireworks, and they're too bright. And so people will be driving by that aren't even residents, and they'll log to complain on the telephone, that sign is blinding, that sign is too bright. So then we change the decibel thing, is how many maximum decibels they can have, but that's really where the sign industry's going. It's, it's no longer that guy standing up on the corner, he'll work for food, he's gonna have one on his chest that's flashing, no longer.
So luckily we do have a standard hidden in here somewhere, it's in, it's under message board signs here, you look at the message board sign standards, it says something about, yeah, uh, the. So under message board signs, one, two, three, four, point four. I'm sorry, point three, no, where is it, we've got a standard in here somewhere that says that message board signs can't change messaging. They have to, excuse me, they have to, they have to stay on the same message for thirty seconds, and then change the next, no, the thirty seconds, then change the next. So I think that that'll block us out good from having anything that's too traffic hazard.
But that's where I brought up earlier, the definition of a message board, now, is it the one I just explained that you elaborate on?
Was it the township sign?
Or is it the township sign, or is it, you know, the old ones that had tires on them, and they put four poles out there, and you move them and change? Which one is it, that had an arrow?
Is there a luna during?
There is a luna.
We've got lunes, and it's, what I really like is that under, uh, prohibited signs, we added that unsafe signs category now. And then the building official can just drive around and say, oh, that's a heavy traffic, and then that sign can come down after that.
I think, was it you, Dan, last month that brought up about when you were on the forest, you never experienced any sort of, uh.
Not issues, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, page six, very quick, uh, public buildings, we already agreed that we're gonna delete all this language about public buildings. Remove all that, and then, the last thing on page six there is hospitals, urgent care clinics, hospital affiliated medical centers. Basically, those get some really special signage requirements, and as they should, in my opinion, so.
Yeah, if you're not familiar with the area, you wanna know where the hell that is, you wanna hit there quick.
Darn well, where it is, yeah, so I like what Joe said there, a little homework assignment for you all, is to keep this handy throughout the next few weeks and drive around the community. And think about, you know, are we in the business of making more non-conformities, or are we in the business of allowing more, more signage? Um, restrict more or reduce more?
Best time for the year.
I like it, I like it, yeah, come back next month with a bunch of these edits, and we'll talk more, try to do the same thing again, hopefully a little bit quicker.
Well, then after Ben puts together a cleaner version of our sign ordinance, then we really wanna look at it again, and look, and look at it again.
And then the third one, you were saying, possible public.
So we do have to have a public hearing at some point, yeah, but we should not have that public hearing until we are higher class, right, what we want. Yeah, and how we can present it best and.
Make it simpler, easier.
There you go.
We can put it on silent.
I know, then he had something else.
Then he can't hear.
Then he can't hear. Can't find them.
The lighting didn't doesn't work after though.
No, the lighting's never good. Okay, I think we're pretty well wrapped up.
Yeah, sure.
Anyone have anything else? Okay, I might have one more.
Oh, she's too ager.